Good evening. Apologize for starting a bit late. Our earlier session went over a little bit long. But I'd like to call to order the June 10, 2014, regular meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education. Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright.
Here.
Belville.
Here.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Great, thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to read the mission of the Boulder Valley School District. The mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all our children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. And to start off our meeting this evening, I would like to ask Bruce Messenger to give us Assistant Superintendent's Report. Thank you.
President Albright, members of the board, good evening and welcome. I have a few things I'd like to share with you this evening. So first of all, the first thing I would like to share with you is last Thursday evening, a number of you joined me and about 25 other members of our BVSD community to celebrate with Deirdre Pilch, Dr. Deirdre Pilch, as Deputy Superintendent, who was recognized as one of five women in our community, as the women who light our community, and that was hosted by the Boulder Chamber of Commerce. It was a fun afternoon-evening and a great celebration, and it was fun to have Deirdre with her colleagues and members of the board and her family to join us in that celebration. And each of the women who were recognized were recognized for really a diverse set of issues and ways they've contributed to our community, and I would say beyond our community, which is quite impressive. And I just thought it was a nice showcase of talent and also a nice connection with our business community. And several folks came to me afterwards, and maybe to those of you that were in attendance, just commenting on, they had no idea all the good things that were going on around our work to graduate more students on time and prepare them and to reduce our dropout rate. And as you know, much of that's under Deirdre's leadership and many others who partner with us on that. So anyway, it was a really fun celebration and pleased that the Chamber of Commerce would host such an event and showcase one of our own. So it was a proud time for BVSD. Another item I'd like to mention is a month or so ago, we had a community member, several actually, who came before you and commented on their anxiety around maybe not having a mountain biking opportunity for their high school age students. And so that was really the first, I was aware of the concern or the situation, but we went to work on it under Michelle de Berry's leadership and working with the principals in multiple schools. And I'd sent you a note some time ago that we put together a mountain biking co-op that will be hosted at Monarch. It's a little variation on our normal procedure of how to mix our activity monies across schools, but we're going to try it and see if we can make it work and we hope create a more opportunity or maintain opportunity for students and maybe even expand that. So I just always like to share back a little good news when we solve problems, so that's one we think we've solved for now. The other event that many of you attended and members of our team, leadership team and staff, was the Razzle Dazzle event hosted by the Impact on Education, which as you know is the education foundation for Boulder Valley School District. And it was a fun evening of silent auctions and live auctions, and one of the things was auctioned was time on an evening with the superintendent and the executive director, Impact. So we raised $3,000 to spend the evening. I hope they aren't disappointed that they invested that level of funding to spend an evening with the superintendent. We'll see. I also want to recognize somebody in the audience this evening on your board agenda. We've asked you to appoint a new Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, so Shelley Landgraf. Shelley, did she step up?
Uh-oh.
Oh, her chance to be honored. Anyway, most of you know Shelley. She'll be back. Anyway, so Shelley.
She's laughing. There she is.
There's Shelley doing work. So Shelley, I've recommended her appointment as Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. So congratulations, Shelley. And as you know, Darcy Moore, the exiting Assistant Superintendent is a security superintendent to see in South throughout the school district, and we're wishing her well in that transition also. So just one of our many administrative changes going on this spring. Next Monday, I'll be presenting as a part of a panel at the CASB Colorado Education Initiative Conference, and the topic that the panel will be presenting on is the work of DAC and SAC in our respective districts. And so I'll give you an update on that, but looking forward to that opportunity to engage in some of your colleagues and mine from around the state. Then the final item I'd like to address, we have scheduled, we're flexing this schedule a little bit because we know that the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and the Facility Master Plan is one of our highest priorities right now, so we're going to be sensitive to our work session time until we get that done. And so, but as soon as we can, either in June or in August, we're going to have a work session on just the strategic plan. But I just wanted to give you a quick update on a few of the things that are going on right now, and then we'll give you a more in-depth update when we get that scheduled into your agenda, is that we had a meeting on Monday, because that would be yesterday, with the Strategic Planning Steering Committee, which is our representative group of 20-plus who have been advising this process all along. One of the things that's in process right now are the development of the action design teams' plans, and those are due in the fall, September, October. So oversight of those, that work is going on. So we have about 14 different teams of a representative group of participants working on kind of what we call the blueprint for the plan going forward. They're not doing the work, they're designing the work, and all that will go through a review process, and we'll bring that to you at a later date. But that work is in process. The other thing that we did on Monday with the Strategic Planning Steering Committee was that we looked at a timeline for this upcoming year, 14, 15, and beyond. And so that's an area we want to review with you. How does this begin to roll out for you and for the community as we begin to bring action to the strategic planning process? The other thing that we visited just briefly with the committee about is we have a district unified improvement plan. We are referring to that, the district improvement plan. Again, what's that interface between the strategic plan and the district plan? And then how does that relate to the school improvement plans and school-based plans? So that's much discussion that we want the strategic plan and your goals, our goals, to influence as we go forward. So that was another part of our conversation. And so we gave them an option to leave the committee if they wanted to after a year, a month of, a year of monthly, day-long meetings. We told them it wasn't a life sentence, but we also didn't want them all to leave because we wanted some continuity. And all but one individual committed to continue, and that was really for a professional obligation that individual had that couldn't make the time going forward. So we're thrilled that this really insightful, helpful team will stay with us in this advisory role going forward. And so we'll remind you in the membership of that, we've shared that earlier. But anyway, it was a very productive half-day meeting, and we're very pleased with the progress we're making around strategic planning. And Dr. Pilch is giving primary leadership to that, and I'm helping her when I can. And we've got a great team, and again, we're going to have a work session on that either in June or in August, depending on when we can get worked into your schedule. So President Albright, that concludes my report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions about those topics or others that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Sounds like you're going to be busy.
We are busy.
Okay. Great. The next item on our agenda is public hearing and public participation. And tonight, we have one speaker who signed up. Public participation at board meetings. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask the persons who address the board, one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes if we go over the first hour, which we won't with one speaker. Three, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium. It starts at green when your two-minute starts, turns yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and it turns red at the end. When the light turns red and you hear the beep, please wrap up your comments so that the board can proceed with its work. So tonight, we have one speaker speaking on an agenda item, the Facility Master Plan, and that person is Sean Gallup. And Mr. Gallup, we received your letter. Thank you for sending it. Please come to the podium and address the board. Thank you for being here.
Great. Should I start?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I have to take two minutes. I can actually receive. My name is Sean Gallup. I'm the chairman of the Board of Trustees of Summit Middle School in Boulder, Colorado. We are a charter school with an academic focus. We serve grades six through eight. And just a couple of issues I'd like to talk about. First, I'd like to say a member of my board actually won that prize that Dr. Messenger talked about briefly. So hopefully, we'll be able to have a discussion in a less formal setting at some point in the near future. We look forward to that. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your service on behalf of Boulder Valley School District and on behalf, perhaps selfishly, of Summit in specific. I also want to thank Dr. Messenger and the board members for their very kind responses to my hastily-assembled letter that I sent to you yesterday, which detailed issues which were both specific to Summit and general with regard to issues that we thought were important happening within the Boulder Valley School District. In that note, I stress some of Summit's specific needs in this forum and mindful of the fact that I don't want to take more than two minutes. What I'd like to say is that to the extent that Summit can be helpful with regard to any work that you're doing on this bond issue in terms of its passing, your deliberations on any of the issues for both ourselves and for the school district as a whole, please let us know. We're happy to help, and we're happy to gather resources that you might need to be successful in what we're hoping you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. The next item on our agenda is board communication. Are there any comments that board members would like to make? Anybody? Shelley?
If I can see my notes up. First of all, thank you for resolving the mountain biking issue. It's always good to hear that the district can be flexible enough to work those things out, so thank you. And I wanted to let you know that Tina and I met with Tim Plasse from the City Council this week to discuss ways that we might be able to collaborate with the city. And I think I shared with you that I met with him once already, and we just sort of discussed the same issues, which were transportation, field collaboration, food sourcing, am I forgetting anything else? Those are the main ones. So Tim's thought now is that he will sort of rally the school issues committee for the city of Boulder and schedule a meeting with those members and members of the Parks and Rec and members of his sustainability group and other relevant staffers at the city who might want to be a part of a meeting with BVSD to discuss these various projects. So Bruce will be coming to you, asking you who you think would be best to sit in on that meeting. My take was that he's going to try and schedule that soon, so I'll let you know. I think that's it.
Okay. Sam? Tom? No? Jenny?
I just have a brief comment. It's more of a no comment, but first of all, you better be a lot of fun for $3,000, Bruce, I gotta say. And I'll just also comment that I've talked to one or two people or heard from one or two people who are on the strategic planning committees and are, seem to be very impressed with the process so far, so that's good news. It's always better when people are happy than when they're coming to complain. So by the way, Mr. Gallup, thank you for coming out because, for obvious reasons, people who come before the board are often unhappy with us, and that's fine. I mean, we welcome them coming, but it certainly is nice when somebody comes forward to volunteer help, and I'm confident we're going to call on that help in the near future, or reasonably confident, anyway. So as you know, Tina and I work as legislative liaisons, and we had a brief conversation this afternoon because CASB had a meeting to wrap up the legislative session in which they reminded us that any resolutions that we would like to introduce are due at the beginning of August. So I don't think Tina and I thought of anything. We sort of discussed what our general statewide concerns were and agreed that CASB has planks on them, as does our own board. You know, we discussed the need for full-day kindergarten, and I again revisited my extreme unhappiness that we now have a testing requirement as a graduation requirement, but I noticed that we're solidly opposed to that, and so is CASB. So I'll just keep mentioning that at every possible occasion because I just think that's outrageous that that's happened without more input from the state. Actually, I think it's outrageous that it's happened at all, regardless of how much input there was for it. So those graduation requirement kinds of things and kindergarten kinds of things and funding kinds of things are covered, but should any school board member think of something that they think that it would be useful to have CASB on board for? You should let us know, and we can, I mean, and you could even bring it up at agenda setting, and maybe we can get something done between now and, it'll be hard, but we could get it done between now and the beginning of August. Or there are other opportunities to bring things up. That's just the ideal timing. So that's all I've got.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the, oh, excuse me. Tom? Okay, great, thanks.
So I've gotten some more communication from the Lewisville Community Group. You know, they were here last time. And I just want to inquire the status of the plan that we committed to present on their concerns.
So I'd be glad, Lori, if it's appropriate to comment. So I've also exchanged emails with kind of the leadership of that group, some of who presented two weeks ago. And so Glenn Segrew and Don are working on a response to me that would lay out a timeline of process to work through this fall and through the fall. So I will obviously review that once I receive it and then forward it on to you, and I've also communicated to that group that that would be my intent to share that with them, too. It's not a commitment to anything, but it's a proposed set of activities and timeline to work through, though. So we'll get that out to you, I would guess, in the near term, this month, and then see if you have suggestions or concerns. We'll obviously come back and visit about it, but I think it's pretty consistent with what we've been communicating with the Lewisville City Council as well. But we'll get it out so folks know what the plan is. Okay?
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay. The next item on our agenda is an information item, update on math materials implementation.
I'll do a brief set for this, and Dr. Ron Cabrera and Jackie Weber. Ron is our Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services and Equity. Jackie Weber, our Director of Mathematics, will take lead on this presentation. A little over a year ago, you obligated district resources to acquire instructional materials for our students elementary through high school, and that was as a result of your approving curriculum for mathematics prior to that, and so it was a major materials adoption. And Jackie's going to speak to that, a little bit about that process. And so you requested through agenda setting that we would give you an update. So that's really the purpose for tonight, and like any adoption and implementation, it's in process. But a year has gone by, and good work has happened, and so Jackie has a PowerPoint, which is in your electronic agenda, and after Ron does a brief set for it, we'll get started. And I know that Jackie'd be glad to answer questions if you have any at the end, so.
Thank you.
Dr. Cabrera.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Messenger. Certainly, it's been a good start to the implementation of the math, of our new math program. And let me just say that as, kind of help you in terms of some of the recollection, it was a long process before we came to the decision to identify a math program that addressed all three levels. It was under the leadership of Jackie Weber that we got to this place. Historically, I came to discover, as you well know, at one point in my career, I was the principal of Boulder High School. During that time, we had over a dozen different math programs and far more other types of programs in our district. So to come to a place in time where we have a district-wide math implementation of agreement around math programming across different levels was a big deal. And I have just been impressed with Jackie's leadership, both in terms of how we need to manage this, to provide the professional development, and to get us to a place where I think we're getting pretty well-grounded. So Jackie's here to give you some background about how the implementation has gone, certainly some of our successes, some of our learning, and where we need to go from here. Okay? Jackie?
Thank you, Ron. President Albright, members of the board, nice to see you again, Dr. Messenger. See you every day. Thank you for inviting me to come and give you a quick update on this. I'm really proud of the work that all the teachers have done this year, and so I'm really excited to, just to tell you about it. So thank you for inviting me. Thank you for your support of this adoption over the last early two years, and thank you for your faith in the math department as we rolled out this implementation. So we'll go ahead and get started. The math department, I think you have the PowerPoint in front of you. Oh, there we are. So this year, there were three of us, myself, Bertha Arona, who is a secondary math specialist, covered mostly the middle schools, and then David Woodward is an elementary specialist, and he covered the elementary schools. So the three of us worked, really helped to support the 55 schools and about 900 teachers this year during the implementation. This coming year, we actually have an additional coach who will be working with the middle schools, and Bertha's going to work with the high schools this coming year. So we're excited about that addition of Dan Greenberg, who was this year a math teacher at Casey. So this is the math department, so we, I think, have done a really great job. I have to thank David and Bertha for working very, very hard to support all of those schools over the course of this year. So today, I'm just going to talk a little bit, just refresh your memory a little bit about the background of this, as Ron said, things that went really well for us this year, things we've learned. You know, it was very successful, but wasn't perfect, and then what we're going to, you know, how are we moving forward with that, or how are we responding to that? So just a little bit of background. The benefits of the new instructional materials is the idea that our instruction needs to be more consistent. And so with these new materials, we developed a more consistent and equitable core instruction. And with core instruction, we mean that everyone has same base that they're learning from. So it kind of gave us that opportunity to align to the new standards and then also, but gave us a chance where it's not one-size-fits-all, but everybody has an education that fits to them, and everyone has that same core. And so that's really where we were, that base instruction is still the same. So that was one of the benefits of the new materials. For students, we really saw that there is a consistency of language and strategy and expectations to support student learning. And so in every classroom, they're learning the same things, they're talking about the same things, they're using the same language, they're learning the same strategies. And prior to this adoption, we had seen really wide variety in classrooms, even classrooms next to each other. So while we're, you know, still allowing teachers to have a lot of creativity and professionalism in what they're doing, we want that base to be consistent. We saw an increased alignment to the academic standards, and then better and smoother transitions from grade to grade and school to school. So because everyone is kind of speaking the same language and using similar strategies and kind of approaching it from a same base, all the students are coming in with a very equitable instruction. For teachers and parents, we really found that this instructional, the new materials, provided an opportunity for better collaboration between teachers because now they're all, again, using the same materials, and they can refer to those. There's common materials, and they can share resources. We have a high school blog that's open right now, and the high schools are sharing materials back and forth. So, oh, we don't need all these books for Algebra I. Oh, we need Algebra I books, and they're sharing those back and forth, which has never been able to happen before. So that's a great use of the resources that we have provided. Unified professional development, so everyone's able to have the same opportunities for professional development. And then with that professionalism and creativity and differentiation, while we're using those same core materials, they're also able to share experiences of what are you doing to differentiate for students? So on top of the core materials, we know that we have these. What else are you doing? So it really opens up that conversation about how do you meet students' needs above and beyond what the materials provide. And then we also have clear guidelines for how parents can support students at home because no matter where their students are, you know, they may have, they may be, they have students at multiple schools, they can talk to parent, you know, their colleagues and other parents, and everyone's having the same experience. So in, just again, a little background, this is what we look for in sort of the essential in a math classroom in Boulder. So we're looking for multiple computation strategies that move towards efficiency. And we talked about this a little bit over the last couple of years, the idea of, we introduce multiple strategies so that students can identify one that makes sense to them, and then they move towards what we would consider that standard algorithm, probably what all of us learned right off the bat. But it moves them towards that efficiency model so they can do it quickly and they can do it fluently, but they also understand why they're doing it. So the multiple strategies allows that to happen. We also ask that they use concrete and visual models to help every student be able to access that understanding, as some students need that visual model. Some students need to have their hands on something in order to understand. So we expect to see that mixed into instruction. Systematic problem solving and using those standards for mathematical practice, that learning how to think critically about a problem. And then discourse, learning how to talk about it and communicate, and how did you solve that problem, and ask questions of each other. We would expect to see student-to-student conversation, excuse me, conversations. Practice developing fluency, so again, we really want this to be balanced, so not all about inquiry, but not all about just rote practice either. It should be balanced so that they learn that fluency, and they learn how to do the problems quickly and accurately, but they also know how to apply the information. So that, again, that's part of that balance. And then the online resources and support, so what does a student have at home to help them? Or what can they turn to if they need some differentiation during the class period? All of those things should be available in the classroom as well. So this year was our implementation year. This was our first year, so all the new materials arrived in August, and that's, and again, I just want to really thank the teachers who just dove right into this. They were just incredible. They embraced it, and they really, they took it on. And, you know, so the teachers, the para-professionals that we have, the principals, the principal's assistants, the custodians, everybody was really involved in this implementation. So I want to thank them for all their hard work and recognize that everyone was really, really working hard this year to make this happen. And so what the implementation looked like was that teachers and district staff, my department as well, we were learning the overarching principles of the materials. So we knew the theory. Obviously, we had done a lot of research looking at the materials, but once you get into it, it looks, you know, we wanted to make sure we understood it once it's in the instructional framework. We learned the nuances, the strengths, and some of the challenges of the materials. That's what we expected to pick up this year. And then we explored the online resources and the intervention tools that come with the program, all of the materials that we got. So this coming year, what we're looking at is called, we like to call it the elaboration year. So now we're going to work on perfecting it. And so what we're looking at is adjusting the response to learning from what did we learn last year? We did a survey of teachers, as well as all the observations and things that we've done, to help us learn what were the strengths, what were the challenges, what are some things we need to work on. We want to provide additional professional development that's tailored specifically to the needs that were identified over the course of this year. And really, what's most important is we want to make it our own in BVSD. So this first year, we asked the teachers to implement it with fidelity, so we kind of had that baseline year, and we understood what the program, what all the materials could do, and again, where we could tweak it and what we could do. And a lot of the teachers took it on, and they embraced it, and they made it their own already. They added the things they already had, you know, some of the great games that they knew, and then they brought in, or some of the investigations, some of the online tools. And now we just need to build that, build on that. And how do we make this, this is our math program? And then, of course, we'll continue to evaluate it, get feedback, continue to process through this. How do we make it as good as we can make it? And then in the following years, of course, remember the adoption is eight to 10 years long, so over the course of those next years, we'll continue to fine-tune it, adjust the professional development as we need to, continue to look at what resources do we need to bring in, look at the online resources, and really work with the publishers to continue to say, we need this and we need that, and this is where we're looking. And that's, the publishers have been very responsive to that as well. Utilize the assessment data trends. Obviously, we have a new test coming in next year as well, so that's going to, that'll be an important piece of information to look at. And then we'll just continue to evaluate the effectiveness through the observations, through the educator effectiveness process. We'll get a lot of feedback around how are the materials working with our instructional practices. So some of the successes we had, this observational data is, from my observations, I was in almost every school this year, fortunately didn't get to every single school, but almost every school, but had a lot of conversations with teachers and principals, and what are you seeing? And so we saw a lot of improved student discourse. Students were talking, especially at the elementary level, students were talking about math, particularly fractions, in fourth and fifth grade, in ways that I have never heard. It was really incredible. I was just astonished, and it was just fun to go and sit in a math class and geek out and listen to the kids talk about math. So that was really, really fun. Really happy with that. The increased level of rigor for all students. So just the level of instruction in general came up significantly, and that was really neat to see. And the students came up with it. They were able to think about it and process. You know, at the middle school level, we really saw them have to wrestle with a problem level, we really saw them have to wrestle with a problem and talk about how they did the problem and talk to each other about, is this solution right or is this not right? Or how did you do it? And really have those deep conversations about, is this a reasonable way to solve the problem? And that was really, really fun to watch. And then we also see the, the development of the standards for mathematical practice. So it's critical thinking, that perseverance, that's something we really hope to see from these new materials and we are seeing that. Students are willing to kind of keep chugging away at a problem and not just kind of give up and want to get the answer, have someone give them the answer. And that was neat. We have a long way to go with some of that, but it was really a good start with that. And then increased teamwork and collaborative skills. The, the programs, the materials that we purchased are all focused around that. Having students learn how to work together cooperatively. Sort of a real world setting. You have to work in teams a lot. And so how do we teach students how to do that? How to communicate, how to get along, how to compromise, how to build a problem together, a solution together. So we saw a lot of that. And for some, for some classrooms, that was a big shift. And so some of the work that we know we have to, to work on in terms of professional development is helping teachers learn how to manage that. How do we, how do we build that conversation? How do we build that? So teachers, again, did a fabulous job this year, but there's just some support, additional support that we can provide for that. And then also this increased use of wait time. So giving the students a chance to wrestle with the problem before we step in and give them the answer. Teachers all have these giant hearts and we don't want to see kids struggle. And so a lot of times, it's a natural instinct for us to step in and give the answer or give a little help or give a little hint. So it was really nice to see through the professional development, teachers were really, you could see them like, not going to give you the answer, you know, giving them that opportunity for the students to really wrestle and, and work it through themselves. So we did have a survey that we put out to teachers in late spring to get some feedback about how they felt it had gone. It was an anonymous survey and I was really, really excited to see that eighty-two percent of teachers reported that their students showed more mathematical knowledge as compared to previous years. So to me, that's a, a part of the standards, but it's also this new material and it's the professional development that we've provided for them. Professional development that we provided, we had one full day in the fall, in August, before school started, that everyone, everyone had to attend that one. Then we had a half day in October where we were able to follow up with them. We also had, during the day workshops for special education teachers in the middle school level to help them understand how to meet the needs of their, of their students. We had offered some online and blended courses and then after-school courses for, for teachers to attend as well. So things that we learned over the course of this year. In terms of professional development, we need additional training for teachers. The day and a half was a great start, but it didn't go in-depth enough for what they need. So we need to use some online, they need help with how to use the online intervention resources as well as differentiating, differentiation. What's included in the materials that we have, you know, part of our goal was that the teachers didn't have to recreate everything along the way. We bought the materials that had those included, but it was difficult for the teachers this year to learn the new materials and dig in real deep to all of the materials, everything the materials had to offer. So part of what we need to work with them on and support them on next year is how to use the differentiation, differentiation materials that are included. So also need a wider variety of opportunities and delivery methods. So for instance, we listened to what the teachers requested. Our elementary teachers want more time to collaborate with each other, but also want time with us face-to-face. Whereas our high school teachers want more online opportunities where they can do their professional development after they're done coaching in the evening or on Saturdays. And we did have requests to do more Saturday work. So we're trying to work that into our schedule and how do we meet the needs of the, of the teachers, just like we expect them to meet the needs of their students. And then we also learned, we knew this, of course, but we kind of reinforced that our parents really appreciated information on the new standards, the new materials and new strategies. So we created a community math series that I did two, three series courses, one in the winter and one in the spring. And they weren't really well-attended, but they were, the people who did attend were really interested and asked great questions, were concerned about how they could support their students. They wanted to understand more. So we got a good example of how our parents wanted to be involved and got some good feedback around what we can do differently or in addition to help get them involved and help educate them as well. So some things that we're doing for next year, we're investigating alternative methods to embed professional development and improve communication. So we're hoping to be able to build that in, more into the, the school day. And we want to develop targeted professional development on the topics that teachers specifically asked us about. One of them, for example, would be how to differentiate for advanced learners at the K to five level. That was one specific example that they gave us. Another one at the middle school level was the teachers needed some help with the summary. So how do we, how do we wrap up a lesson after we've had all this great conversation? How do we stop the conversation, which is really hard because students are excited? So how do we stop that conversation and summarize so there's a closure to the lesson that day? That was one of the things the middle schools have asked us for. The high schools have asked us for more help with the online resources, Math Excel, and, and how do we help use that to support students who may be two, three, four grade levels below. So we all have some, all, all levels have very specific things that they've asked for. So we're also working with Pearson to completely replace all the CMP materials. And we talked about this last spring, as you remember. They were rolling out the materials and we did find some errors in the book. So we have, we've asked them, you know, we've identified a lot of, of those errors for you. So we've, we've worked with them to have them replaced. So they're going to be replaced next year for us. Probably not in August. They're going to wait until the cleanest copy is out. So my guess is in the middle of the year. But they're exchanging those at no cost to us to replace those for the, kind of the work that we did with them this year. We're also working on developing specific supplemental ideas to help teachers, you know, how do you use the instruction, the resources that came with the materials, but then what else do you need? There, you know, no, no program is going to be perfect. So working on developing some of those instructional resources and having teachers share them on our instructional management system. So that a first-grade teacher can go to this and say, oh, I did what was in math expressions and I still have a few students who need a little extra help. What else is out there? And so they can go to this instructional management system and look for other activities or resources that are available. And then we're going to continue with the community math series, again, working with parents to help them understand the changes. And then the math newsletter, which has had a great response. So that's kind of a really very Reader's Digest version of this, of this year's implementation. So thank you again for the invitation to be here. And I believe Bruce will open it up for questions.
Yeah. So if board members have questions, I'd be glad to try to respond or ask Jackie or Ron to respond if there are things that I can't answer. So members of the board, there's your overview of our math implementation for 2013, 14.
So, board members, Tina.
Thanks so much and for all that information about the new math program. It was such a big initiative this year. I had a couple of questions. One, I think, is just because we're talking about the bond later and you mentioned that this has a larger element of collaboration and teamwork. Are you finding in the schools that there's enough physical space for teamwork and collaboration? I've done some tours of schools where things are really tight and I'm wondering were there any things that you observed or any feedback you heard about physical space supporting the math program?
Bruce?
So I would say in general, Tina, you know, part of the work the project managers have done is to work with principals on every school site. So there isn't anything specific in the bond that addresses space related to this work in mathematics. However, if there are inadequate classroom spaces, then those are considered as a part of their project managing analysis. The other is that, well, depending on what we do with the capital improvement planning recommendations, is that there is the innovation funds. So some of the conversation around the innovation funds is to create more flexible spaces so that there can be collaboration, not just in mathematics, but some of the examples we've given in our work last summer as well as planning would create, if they choose to some of the spaces. Again, we have great variability across the district around that. But clearly, creating flexibility in learning spaces will be a major theme through the work of the innovation funds.
And then another question I had, thank you, is in terms of the assessment data, is, are there, are the unit tests for math, and I think I can only speak to elementary, are they online so that we have quicker assessment data? Are we mostly going to rely on the state testing for PARC? And I'm just thinking we have this testing with iReady and iStation.
Right.
Which is going to be a quick and earlier, faster intervention. I'm wondering, will we see the same thing on the side with mathematics?
We have not acquired a comparable program to iReady and iStation for mathematics. As you know, we, the iReady iStation is our literacy assessment for the READ Act. I think as we have the chance in the next year or so to implement PARC and see how it serves us in data collection and accuracy as far as what's helpful to us, I mean, we'll know more. That is an online assessment and it won't be initially a quick response time, but the plan is over several years, we will get quicker feedback, but not still a formative assessment like iReady and iStation is. So I think we'll continue to look at formative assessments. That's some of the work we've got embedded in the assessment committee of the strategic plan. That action design team is looking at formative assessments for multiple areas, including mathematics. So I would say we're in progress with that right now. And then ultimately, if we have the, if they're available online, we have the capacity to do that, we'll certainly consider that. Access to equipment is always one of the things we consider when we look at that, including iReady, so.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Tina.
Sam?
So when will we know that this new curriculum is making, I mean, we heard this encouraging statistic that eighty-two percent of the teachers think it is, but when will we see the data to back that up or?
Well, I think that'll be a conversation that we need to have is which data set, as a district, as a board, we want to use to measure that. You know that in literacy, we've used LLI data and, and reading recovery data in combination with TCAP. And now TCAP's going away. So, I mean, PARC will certainly be something we look at. I mean, until we really implement PARC, the new state assessment, we won't know how well it measures what we're teaching. I mean, we'd like to think there's good alignment there. We've been assured there is. But, I mean, I'm just going to say, we'll see. But if it's a good measure, that will give us some summative data. So how do third graders do over time? How do fourth graders do over time? I think the other question we'll ask is how does a cohort group of students do over time and can the PARC assessment answer that? So I, I would just say, in the next twelve to twenty-four months, Sam, we'll have a better sense of what assessments we know we'll be doing by law. That will be helpful to us. And then if we find that they're not helpful in evaluating the program as well as the proficiency of students, then we may need to use other measures, not unlike what Tina had asked about, that might be more performative. But I just really think until we implement the test, we're not, I mean, we can do these observational, and I think that's important. It's clearly in the transition, it's important to have the observational data and field data we collect. But I think we also are going to want some overarching accountability. And I'd like to think that's what a state assessment could help us do. But until we actually implement, we probably aren't going to give a firm answer on that yet.
Okay, thanks. And Jackie, thank you for the presentation. Can you say a little bit more about what information the parents get at the elementary level and how we help them? And this is just because anecdotally in my neighborhood, the, I've heard from a number of elementary parents who, you know, say, well, they don't teach it like I learned it and a little panicked.
Yeah, that much is true. So what we've really tried to do with the newsletter in particular is, is present what different strategies they're going to see. So here are some things. And it does look different than what we've seen. They may recognize one of the strategies, but there are two or three other strategies that look completely foreign that any of us probably never saw. So what we've really tried to do is provide the schools with letters and resources that they can put out. We also have the newsletter. And then the community math series, the first, first session of the series is about the new sta, kind of the new strategies. And we go through some really specific examples around, okay, this is what division looks like. Wow, this is different. And so we've tried to provide that. But then also, all of the elementary schools can provide to the parents access to the online system. And there, they can see examples of all the strategies. And so if they're looking at, you know, new groups below, that's just a weird name for really what we've always done, except instead of carrying the one up above, they carry the one down below. So it's just, it's got some names to it. So there are online resources that the parents can access at home that explain some of that and give examples. And so if there's, the student comes home with a problem and they don't understand the process, they can look at it online. And then there also are letters that go home at the beginning of every unit that introduce, CMP does this as well as math expressions, that introduce the strategies that are coming to help parents understand, you know, what is this, you know, weird name strategy or what is this thing that we're looking at? So we've really done a lot to try to help parents understand that. But some of it is on the schools and if they put it out in their newsletters or if the teachers send it home in the Friday folders. So there is a little bit of that that we're going to work on next year too, to sort of help, here, here are those resources. You know, you can send those out more. But we're, we have tried to kind of put out there that, you know, it's okay and here's how you help your teach, you know, here's how you help your student. And if it's a strategy you don't understand how, try to have the student explain it to you. And really, we've, we've given them that, okay, that if, if it's so frustrating at home, to some extent, it's okay that the student doesn't finish the homework. You know, we don't want them to be completely frustrated and not doing their math because they, they need a little bit more support and maybe they can't find it online or whatever the, the concern is. Then have the parent write a note back to the teacher and say, hey, this is what we worked on. And, and we, we kind of hit a frustration point. And so that helps the teacher also understand what's, what was done and what was happening. And then the teacher can communicate out to the parent too, additional supports or here, you can look here for these resources and so forth. So we, we've really tried to use all the tools that we have at, at our disposal to help, help parents. But we do understand that's also kind of an ongoing battle because it does look very different than what we, we all saw in education.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, Jackie and Ron and all the, everyone in the district math department. Really appreciate the update here of what's going on and the hard work that you guys are doing and trying to implement this. A couple of questions. First is a follow-up with, with Sam's question. You explained some of the parent feedback that you're getting in terms of some of the confusion with the different styles of teaching and methods of teaching. What are some of the other feedback that we're hearing from the parents, both good and, and maybe areas of improvement?
Jackie, if you have briefly, let's give comments.
So the conversations that I've had with parents at family math nights, we've had quite a few schools who've had those. The parents are really, once they understand sort of the new process, they really like it because their students are coming home, you know, most of them coming home excited about math and they're talking to them about math. Like, oh, this is what I learned in school today and it's math, which for some of them was really kind of a new thing. You know, I think that they're, they're excited about the fact that there is a little more structure to it and that their students, no matter where their students are going, there's that consistency. I've had, definitely had some feedback around that. And the idea of, you know, now the middle schools, when students moved to middle schools, the middle schools are aware of all the strategies that the students learned. That hadn't been the case. And so students often felt, you know, kind of had that first couple of weeks at sixth grade where they, the teachers had to learn all the strategies they were learning, you know, that sort of thing. So that, I've had a really positive response from the, the parents. And there's been some great questions. But once we work through the questions and show them the strategies, they've really understood the processes and the, understand why we do multiple strategies. So feedback's been pretty positive overall.
That's good to hear.
I just want to add another point, Tom. I mean, I think that there has been in some cases, some confusion about what this meant with the specific type of classes, you know? Where does this curriculum fit into advanced classes and whether their child can advance or not be accelerated? In those circumstances, actually Jackie has kind of walked them through to say, to some, in some cases, just been some misunderstanding about where, you know, really talented kids in math still get, still get challenged and they can, as appropriate, be accelerated. If that's the right thing to do. But certainly, it's more about, I think, framing what parents were familiar with with now a new programmatic approach and what we're trying to do, so.
Thank you, Ron.
Great. Second question here. When we were considering the adoption of these materials, there was concern expressed over the maturity level, you know, given that publishers were just, you know, getting the curriculum put together. And so the concern was, was, well, you know, are we investing right here? So I was very glad to hear that the publishers are responding at no cost to give us, you know, at least a rata updates. Actually, that actually is going to be written in, not going to be a rata, I understand. They're going to be actually written into new textbooks at, at no cost. So, so that's awesome to hear. You mentioned in your presentation some challenges. I, I wonder if you could just educate me a minute on, on some of the challenges of these materials?
Jackie, I don't know if you have anything to add beyond what you presented?
Yeah, I'm not sure beyond what, what we've said in terms of things that we've needed to address with professional development, you know?
Okay. I didn't, that was one of your bullets and I didn't know exactly if, if there were other things besides what you had in your bullets that were challenges.
No, I think we, we hit those in the presentation.
Okay. And also on the specific needs you mentioned, were there other things there other than the presentation that?
No, that was a pretty good summary.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So we'll keep you posted as we proceed, if there are any other questions?
Do you have a, are there other, I think there might be one or two more questions here. Let's just see. Anybody? Jim? Shall I? No? Jenny?
So maybe some comments too. I appreciate your specifically calling out the, the advanced learn, the conversations with the parents of advanced math learners. And also some of the, in your presentation, you talked about that a little bit because as I went through schools or as I talked to parents, that was one of the big concerns. In fact, I think we went back and forth. You were kind enough to answer several questions that had been raised to me about that earlier in the year. And I think they're continued. in the year, and I think there continued to be a little bit of confusion, so I'm really glad that you've, you've clearly been giving that some thought. Thank you. And another area where I heard some concerns that you didn't address in your presentation, but I'm sure you've been thinking about, is that I've heard several teachers concerned about our English language learners and the amount of writing that's required of them in this math curriculum, and how sometimes that might be an issue for them. Is that something you've thought about, or?
Jackie, if you have anything to add to that?
So, that is something that we've, we've thought about, and these materials were picked strategically because they had scaffolds built in for our English language learners, and this is one of the areas that we kind of worked on of, teachers aren't really aware of all the good stuff that's built in there yet.
Yeah.
So, that was one of the things that we are highlighting for next year of how do, how do you build out that conversation? And one of the things we also need to work with teachers on is, how do you differentiate assessments so that, you know, they don't all need to be, you know, a five sentence paragraph to answer that question? You know, so, just working, just sort of that fine tuning, finessing, what do those answers need to look like? What's expectation? And so, that's one of the things that we have identified, that teachers needed a little bit more support with what's available, and then how, really instructional practice behind it.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. I think, in general, as the year has gone on, I've heard less, let, I mean, and I've visited schools, I've heard less concern than I did at the very beginning of the year, which I take is a really positive thing, that people are comfortable with it. So, if I were, I'm just really curious, this is not a policy thing, but I'm kind of curious about what it looks like. So, if I were to wanna see the resources that parents are getting, where would I go to look for that?
You can contact Jackie, she'd be glad to provide them to you.
Oh, that'd be great, because I'd like to learn the new math, too, I think.
Okay, great.
And I think... I think that's it. Thank you, by the way, for this presentation. I thought it was very thorough, and it helped me to understand what was going on a lot. Great presentation.
Mathematics will be one of the action teams in the strategic plan, so as we provide updates around that work, you'll get regular updates from that team as well. So, Jackie is co-chairing that group, as you'd expect, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for this presentation. This is something the board has been curious about and interested in, as we adopted these new materials and thought about it, and I appreciate very much the feedback and the work that you've done, and it's very informative, and so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie, for your leadership. Ron?
Jackie, Bruce. Thank you. Okay, so, the next item on our agenda is consent grouping, action items, and they consist of the following items. Eight point one, personnel items. Eight point two, approval of minutes, May twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteenth, regular meeting. Eight point three, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, additional transfer of funds for June. Eight point four, twenty fourteen, fifteen benefit plans approval. Eight point five, acceptance of donation from Centaur's High School. Eight point six, approval for natural gas utility. Eight point seven, authorize, authorized for approval to accept bids and authorized contracts during July twenty fourteen, when we will not be in session, the board. Eight point eight, award of contract for MHC Software Incorporated. Eight point nine, cancellation of July eighth and July twenty-second, twenty fourteen board meetings. Eight point ten, cash management for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen fiscal year. Eight point eleven, extreme software upgrade and annual maintenance contract. Eight point twelve, ratification of negotiated agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Education Association. Eight point thirteen, ratification of negotiated agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Educational Office Professionals. Eight point one four, telephone system maintenance replacement contract approval. Do I have a motion to approve? Jenny? Is there a second? Jim? Are there any items that anyone would like to pull? Nothing to pull. Does any board members, do any board members have any questions about any of the items on this list? Tom?
Just a quick question.
On the additional transfer of funds for food services and risk management and Colorado preschool program, you may have told us before how much, I know this is a standard thing to do, but could you just refresh my memory?
We won't have that information until later, when we close the books after June, probably in August.
Okay.
And for the food service fund and the risk management fund, we're waiting on insurance proceeds and FEMA proceeds to see how that works out, and so, we'll know there. And the preschool fund is a new audit check that CDE is requiring that our transfer be exactly the same as what their audit check, and so, that's, that's two thousand seventy-eight dollars, I think. Is that right? Give or take?
Yeah, not very much.
But the others, we'll know more, and we'll come back to you with that amount as we close.
So, since the food services enterprise fund, we have to then cover, right, that?
We do, that's right.
All right, thank you.
Sam?
The benefits plan piece, I mean, it's just deeply concerning to me that we're, you know, we're asking our employees for more out-of-pocket, increasing the deductibles, and I know that we can enable all these different strategies to keep our employees healthy, but as it says here in our memo, costs are going up and our employee population is aging, so I just urge us all to, you know, think outside the box and get out front of it as much as we can. And then I have a question here for somebody.
You can go.
About the strategies to improve care and health and reduce costs, and it's the bullet point, first bullet point, self-fund dental and health coverage. I thought we were already doing that. We have opportunity for more self-funding that could save us some money, or?
We are self-funding.
I'm not sure which bullet point, but we are definitely self-funded on both health and dental insurance.
Yeah.
Is that listed under a strategy?
Yeah, strategies to improve care, improve health, and reduce costs, so we're already doing that, just keep up, any?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, you have authorized an increase of seven point five percent, increase in health benefit contributions for all of our employees, now a second year that that'll happen. I mean, the reality is, that's low compared to our peer districts, and so, what we're experiencing is unlike other employers, and, I mean, so I think the good news for Boulder Valley School District is we have a self-insured plan, and we have a great oversight committee, so I can assure you, Sam, that they're doing all they can to both reduce the exposure and risk for our employees, and not shift too big of a burden to the school district because, or to employees, because, you know, obviously, it has to be paid for. So, I, and under Bob Jamison's leadership, you know, we've really had great success in creating deals, partnerships with area providers to give deeper discounts, and so, you know, I'm really confident that we're working hard on that, and employees very dedicated on a self-insurance plan. But it is, you know, just some of the reality we live in right now with increased health costs, and you're as familiar with that as anyone, so we'll keep working on it.
Sam, I don't like it either.
No, I know what you mean.
But, I mean, it's partly the reality. Jenny?
I, on the cost-saving side, I think it was the telephone system I saw, we're actually realizing substantial savings, so we're gonna be paying less by an order, I mean, it looked like a hundred thousand dollars or more to me a year, and since that never happens, I thought I ought to just call it out as.
Always looking at those contracts, trying to reduce the cost.
Really, you know, great thing, I appreciate us, you know, mining those pennies.
Absolutely.
And then, and then I know you already mentioned it, but I just would like to, again, second, I'm really thrilled that Shelley Landgraf is taking over.
No, thanks.
As our assistant superintendent, I've had the opportunity to work with her on the Edge of Cater Effectiveness Committee, and have never failed to be impressed with her level of preparation and understanding of the issues and knowledge of our district, so congratulations again.
Thank you, Jenny, we're thrilled.
Question? Okay, I see no other questions. Let's see, I guess we should vote. Sandy, will you please call for the vote? Albright? Yes. Bellbell?
Yes.
Benford? Buqua?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the adoption of the twenty fourteen, fifteen budget, and we have heard presentations about this budget, we've had work sessions about it, we've had a hard copy if we were interested, and I see some up here. So, it's time to talk about the budget. Do we need a motion first to approve it? Yes. Is there a motion to approve it? Sam? Motion to approve, is there a second? Jim? Okay. So, are there any questions about this budget or comments? Okay, Tom, thanks.
So, first, I want to recognize Leslie, and Bill, and Chuck, and all of the business services department, because having served as treasurer for a while, and then at many audit committee meetings, I know how much this really is. A lot of working parts, a lot of uncertainties, a lot of pieces to try to figure out to put this budget together, and we have extremely capable staff that does that, so thank you very much. So, the, as always, the budget materials are great and, well, very transparent, so we can see what's going on, and I thank you for that. I'd just like to publicly, publicly state my disappointment that, that we're not able to take the additional funding that we got for growth this year, and actually, from the state, and actually fund growth within our district for this year. So, we had discussions on that, and evidently, I don't have the support of the board to do that, but it is something that I feel very strongly about, because having all the cuts we've received over the last four years or so, you know, our, our enrollment has grown without providing FTE, you know, a sustainable FTE to each of the schools, and so, I'm looking forward for discussions in the fall about that, and how we get out in front of that a little bit more next year than, than this year. It's certainly not something that's enough that I'm gonna vote against this, but it is a piece that I'm disappointed we weren't able to address.
Okay, thank you. It's a big budget. Any other comments or questions? Shelley? Thank you.
I'd like to second Tom's, thank you for this budget, to the whole finance staff. I spent a lot of time with it this past week, and it really is an incredible document in terms of, there's almost an answer to every question you could possibly have about the district in the budget, so I really appreciate the effort that you go to, to do this, and I recommend everyone get a hard copy, because it's much easier to read than it is online. Yeah, that's for sure. And I'd also like to second Tom's comments. I am very much in support of funding enrollment growth, and I think the conversations we've had around that have been good, and I also look forward in the fall to discussing it so that in the next budget, that enrollment is covered, growth in enrollment is covered. So, there's nothing in this budget that concerns me enough that I wouldn't vote to adopt it. I do have some minor questions that I think I'll just take up with staff, so as not to take up too much time, but, yeah, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Questions? Well, just on behalf of the board, thank you very much for your work. Leslie, Bell, Chuck, Bruce, thank you for your work on this. I think it's very important, it's got a lot of information, as Shelley says, and I think it's time to vote on it. So, Sandy, will you please call the, for the, call the vote? Albright? Yes. Bellbell?
Yes.
Benford? Buqua?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes. Well, that's a big step forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the study item, it's the superintendent recommendation for the educational facility master plan, and we've been having this conversation now for a year. We've had CIPSE, who has met our community group, and wrestled with a lot of these issues, improving our facilities, and coming up with recommendations, which they have sent to us last month, I think, it must have been May, I guess, could have been April, but in the last several weeks. We also have a recommendation from our superintendent that we approve the, the facility master plan funding that include priorities one, two, and three, and that you have recommended to us, Bruce, that we consider that, that piece of the bond, and I think in the last week or two, the board has had an opportunity to ask questions about anything that would be specific that we had concerns about, and I think our plan for tonight is to see if there's anything that anyone would like to modify this, and then to give a nod to the superintendent to proceed with whatever our recommendation is. So, right now, I'd like to open this discussion up to anyone who would like to talk about anything specifically or in general, and let's move this conversation along and see where we are. Sure, Shelley.
I thought we potentially had another discussion about this on the, next week in the work session?
We do.
So, we don't need to resolve that.
We have, we have two more meetings left, and we can continue to talk about it if there are questions or concerns. We're just hoping to move it along. We've had a chance to ask some questions and understand, I think, what some of the issues are, both from our own personal point of view, listening to people in the community, and what, what is it that we are concerned about? So, if there are concerns, it's time to really mention them and figure out how to deal with them, and the board will decide. So, Sam?
So, I'm still concerned about the air conditioning piece. I mean, on one hand, we could just say, this is the recommendation of our committee and our superintendent, let's let the voters decide if they want additional air conditioning, but I'm having trouble even putting that forward, given the conflicting values there that we discussed at our last meeting. And so, I wondered if, do we know, Bruce, how much of our electricity in the district comes from renewable sources? Is that something we track? You know, do we have specific investments in wind power, for example, or anything like that? Do we know?
Purchase our power from Excel, so probably whatever their portfolio is, is what our portfolio is. We do have some solar panels on some of our buildings through SolarCity that we get credit back for, but for the most part, we could probably go online and see what Excel's portfolio is, that's really our portfolio.
Yeah, so the standard they're required by state law to meet, we're assuming that's what ours is.
Right. So, just like any other user in this city of Boulder or the surrounding area would be the same.
Well, since we have this value of sustainability, we, we see a warming trend, we feel like fossil fuels contribute to that. Is there some way, I don't know, how much more would it cost us to say, "We're gonna do AC, but we're gonna pay for it through green power?" I'd be interested, that's just a question I'm asking, as I'm trying to resolve this conflict in my mind. Obviously, I want our students and our teachers to be comfortable, but I don't want to, I don't want to increase our carbon footprint in the process, or I'm having a really hard time signing off on that. You know what I'm saying? Yeah.
So, maybe I could, Lori, we've had some administrative discussions around this after Sam brought it up last time. What we can say, I mean, there's a lot of analysis that could occur about, you know, exact costs and sources, but we're confident that if we were to do this combination of projects, that the reduction in energy that results from more efficient devices that are coming through the other investments will offset any energy consumption or costs that will be produced as a result of this air conditioning that's in this package, not if we went larger, but we'll have notable savings in more energy-efficient devices that we install. So, that's, you know, that sustainability's a whole nother portion of this.
Sure.
It's not the air conditioning. So, now, if we didn't have the air conditioning investment and the cost, obviously, there'd be more savings.
Yes.
But I think if your concern is about the overall footprint of this package, other than the fact we're adding a new school, which obviously is gonna have energy consumption we don't have today, that we can say with some confidence that that growth in cost, as well as environmental impact, will be offset through the sustainability measures that are implemented over the course of the full bond. I mean, obviously, not immediately.
And I appreciate that. I would just like us to do better.
Yeah.
And not, you know, would it be possible to cost that out if we say, you know, something like?
So, maybe restate your question.
If we were, could we invest in renewable power at a level that would be equivalent to the additional kilowatts used by the increased air conditioning, and how much would that cost? So, we're adding AC while not, you know, while not looking to increase our carbon footprint from that by using fossil fuel-generated electricity. Does that make any sense? Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly see what, we could work with GDA. We can't do that tonight.
No, I didn't expect anybody to.
But we could take a look and see. I mean, we'd obviously have to either increase the size of the bond by the renewable sources of energy or offset it with another project that would come off because, I mean, obviously, there would be costs associated with it.
Yes, I understand.
So, we could certainly explore that.
Just expressing my current thinking on this conflicting issue. And I'm done.
Thanks, Sam.
Shelley?
So, Sam, are you, are you wondering, can we build solar panels on all the schools to power the air conditioning? Is that where, and what would that cost, or geothermal or something like that?
Well, I'm open to any idea. I thought probably the most efficient way would be to up our portfolio from Excel, saying we want X amount of additional wind power. That equates to the additional electricity we're going to use in adding AC. But I'm open to any of those ideas.
We did briefly talk to Tim Plasse, the City Council, about this. And he said that should there be a municipal utility, that we would get the industrial rate, which would be lower than, you know, the average rate. And he didn't go into much detail, and I don't know exactly what that means, but there might be a way to negotiate in case that event comes about.
Yeah.
Jenny?
Sam, I appreciate your concerns and to some extent, share them, except that it doesn't seem entirely, I mean, and I know you wrestle with this, but it doesn't seem entirely equitable to me to say, "Well, we'll keep air conditioning schools where it already is," but schools, the five schools that we've added to the list because we know their problems and we know they're unusually hot schools. For example, we won't address those issues. It doesn't seem just fair to me to the students in those schools, especially since we know that those five schools have been identified as particularly uncomfortable schools. And I can tell you that I've had several people mention to me their appreciation for the air conditioning at Brimfield Heights Middle School, which is one of the schools. I've had several people say they really appreciate that being in the package, that their class, because, because the way Brimfield Heights, for example, Middle School is cited, it's a solar sink. It just collects hot air. And because of the way that we've changed our security, we've changed the way we think about security in that school. It used to be that you could open the doors on all sides of the building and get some cross ventilation, but you can't do that anymore because you can't open the back, you can't leave the back door propped open all day for security reasons, or, and you really can't ever prop it open. So, I think, I think while I, while I, I just want to say that I would prefer to see us make our energy savings in some other way than, than leaving those students, particularly since, you know, leaving those, those schools as hot and kind of unbearable as they are through the year. And there probably are other ways we could save air condition, you know, we could save energy money. And, and I agree with that thought of yours. How do we, how do we balance out the total? But I would hesitate to do it by just refusing to address the comfort and learning issues that are raised by those schools, at those schools. And the ones that, where we want to have summer learning, I mean, I think those, that's, that's another place where we probably really do need to address that. And then if we need to, if we want to balance that out, do it some other way that's more equitable across the district.
Shelley?
So, with these 10 schools, plus the schools that are already air-conditioned, how many does that leave that are not air-conditioned in the district?
So, Dawn, how many schools would remain un-air-conditioned if we do these 10 beyond what we already have in our portfolio?
I don't know.
Twenty?
If the 10 go?
If they are air-conditioned.
I think we'd have around 15.
That would remain un-air-conditioned?
Correct.
Out of the 55, so. And these are schools that we believe, so, the ones that aren't air-conditioned are schools that we believe with the other investment, which is a part of this package around ventilation, circulation, and using natural cooling conditions, that we, they will be acceptable for continued use. Really, what Jenny just said is that it's the five that we don't believe we can achieve that with, that are by design problematic. And then those that we want to do extended summer programming in, knowing that there already are schools that we do extended summer programming in now that are air-conditioned. So, we don't today need services in every one of our schools in the summertime. We can cluster those services, given the number of children we educate. So, this would place those air-conditioned buildings in neighborhoods where there's high concentration of need so that we could provide neighborhood service, which we know is for any of our children, if the service is in their neighborhood, they're more likely to participate. So, this gets, provides the learning space where it's most needed. So, that's really the strategy that got us to this recommendation. But, you know, given our present calendar and these new improvements that would occur as a part of the whole package on ventilation and exiting hot air and bringing in cool nighttime air, we think that, you know, we'll certainly be in a much better place than we have been in recent years. And our calendar adjustment has helped some with that, and we may choose to make some additional calendar adjustments. That'll be another evening's discussion for you. But that's how we got to this decision.
Can I make a quick correction on my number?
Yes.
I believe it's 23, 23, that would not be.
Would not be 23, okay, thank you. What I said would apply to the 23 is the same as the 15, so.
Tom, yeah, sure.
So, since we're talking about air conditioning, I have concerns too, but, but it's from the, you know, equity side. I know that now we, we have inequities because some schools have air conditioning and some don't. And so, then we, you know, add it to ones we believe are the most in need, should we say, but that still leaves 23 schools without air conditioning. And certainly, I think we're setting ourselves up for, you know, the arguments coming in that, "Well, I think my school needs it too. Why did this school get it and I didn't get it?" So, that's, that's just a basic concern. I don't know that I have any, any solution for that other than perhaps reprioritizing some of the things so we don't go over the $600 million that we've talked about in order to get it into that, that Priority Three package would be one thing that I would, I would suggest we take a hard look at. Again, we'll end up with the same set of discussions, you know, as this comes forward. And, and hopefully, once it's approved, then there'll be those schools that say, "Gee, why did you leave us out?" So, that's a concern I have about air conditioning. Now, the central kitchen, I am still need to, I guess, convince myself that that's going to be a good financial step for us because of, well, the obvious cost of doing it, but the cost of maintaining it. But one of the concerns that I have, it's, is I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, this, as I view it, it gets us into the business of food processing. And is that the business we really want to get in as a school, district? You know, we're in the business of educating. So, I'm real concerned about focusing a lot of staff time and attention to getting in the business of food processing. I think there may be some, some other alternatives to doing this that, that the ongoing cost would be less to us. There are certainly people that do that that could be more efficient, and that's their business than we are. And I'm just wondering how much that was investigated. And so, one of the questions I would have is, what alternatives are those with partnerships that we could have with businesses that do food processing that we could achieve some of our goals without, without, you know, spending the money and then the ongoing expenses of a central kitchen? So, the, the, the third thing I have is, is I would like to see a wider range in the priority packages. You know, we have one at 366 million, one at 507, and one at 576. I think, you know, going out for a bond, there's not much difference between 507 and 576. I would, I would like to see that center one be somewhere more around, you know, 450 so that there is a good step there that, of differentiation. And so, what I would ask is, is for the, within these packages, what were the CIPSE-recommended priority for these items so that I can take a look at that? I mean, and I'd love to see a proposal by staff at, you know, what we would prioritize within that center package, to have a good distinct decision point between two and three. Right now, I don't see much, you know, distinguishing difference between two and three in terms of a bond election. So, I would like to see, again, what can we do in Priority Package Two to get more down to the 450 million dollar range to give the board a, a good distinction, decision point between the two, because I don't see much of a difference right now.
So, let me just ask a question. So, how would it help to have more distinction?
Well.
I think we've had three different recommendations.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we decide.
Are you trying to balance it, like financially?
Financially, yes.
Do you have something specific that you're trying to?
No.
That you want to?
No, well, without knowing priorities of CIPSE, I don't know. I don't have a recommendation as to what we would throw out to get down to 450. But I would just like to see a distinction in range between the three, such that if we come to a decision that, hmm, maybe 576 is too much, something in the, in the 450 would be a reasonable number to go to. If we say 576 is too much, then 507, gee, that's almost, you know, I think from the voter's standpoint, almost as much. I mean, we're still over 500 million. And that's why I'd like to see that, that would give us, as a board, an option for a second priority that would be more in, in the middle between the two. So, that's the idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think I can address a couple of Tom's questions or comments. CIPSE did not prioritize within these packages. So, they have Priority One, Two, and Three. They didn't prioritize within those. So, if we were to modify any combination of these, either the board can do it at the board table, or you can direct staff, and I guess I'd just ask a majority of the board direct staff to take the time to go through and do that, because there isn't, there isn't a cheat sheet on this. We'd simply have to go through and cut $57 million out of, out of the 507, and without guidance from the board, I mean, if you ask us to do that, we obviously will, but that'll be staffed. There isn't any information from CIPSE. So, this represents the best work of CIPSE. They did not prioritize within the priority packages. So, I just want to clarify that. Then the other is on the kitchen. So, what we've shared, and you have this information, is that the savings around a centralized kitchen is in staff cost. We reduce our annual staff cost in trying to get more towards making it sustainable on its own revenue, which we aren't there yet, but this would help us get towards that. The only food processing, all the food prep for what's served in the schools would be the same, except more efficient, we believe, in this kitchen because of just some efficiencies of centralizing the services. The food processing, maybe this is what you're referring to, Tom, is that it would be our hope that we could expand the purchase of local-produced products that could be prepped in the growing season and served in the non-growing season. I mean, we don't have the capacity to freeze natural products and have them available to serve in November. So, and the reality is, no one else in our community does either. And so, we are limited on the number of naturally grown local products because of the window of harvest and service. And this would increase our ability to do that. And some of the conversations we've had with the city and the county and local producers is buying their surplus after they go to the farmer's market, that that's an opportune time for us to purchase those items and process them so they can be served at a later date. If we don't do that, we're buying processed products by companies that aren't local and are shipped in. So, I mean, overall, we see a reduced cost, but that's one of the advantages of having a centralized facility. Not that we couldn't do that in other locations, it's simply we don't have the capacity to do it right now because of our, as we've talked about before, our regional kitchens were never designed really to do this work. So, that's probably the food processing base, Tom, that you might be referring to.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was referring to.
So.
In that, wondering if we had investigated enough partnering with, with businesses to be able to do that, with arrangement that folks that actually do food processing as a business.
We could certainly inquire. I'm not aware of any local company that does that, but we certainly could inquire.
Okay, that would be great.
I mean, again, I think our interest is to keep it as a locally-produced product for reasons you would understand.
Right.
We could certainly look and see what options we'd have. This has actually been an ongoing conversation with the city and county about how to do this, so.
Okay. Jim?
Jim, thank you. So, I think Bruce was asking for some guidance around redoing Package Two, and I, I would not be in favor of redoing Package Two. I see this is a recommendation from CIPSE. I would not ask staff to go try and cut something out. I believe the proper way would be to go back and ask CIPSE. I'm unwilling to do that because I think they've already done a really terrific job. And I would also point out to the board, Package Two was actually the least popular package when polled. So, and Package Three was the most popular package polled. So, that's, that's my input into, into the question that was asked.
Any other questions? Jenny, please.
I'm going to agree with Tom on that one, I mean, with Jim on that one, excuse me, because I really plan to support Priority Three in any case. So, if I, if I, if I were, if I were going to come down someplace different, I might be interested, have some interest in getting it, not to 450, but maybe to 499, which I think we could do pretty easily. That's what we, that's what we did with the last bond, was just got it down. But, but I actually plan to support, I mean, I would be in support of going for the full amount because I agree that, that seems to be what our community supports. And, and, and I think we should, we, well, it seems like the most expensive one, I think we should all remember that the, actually, the most expensive package is the $900 million package that did not get referred to us. So, so we, it's not that we're being recklessly extravagant here. So, that's sort of my comment. The, the centralized kitchen, I've sort of been going back and forth on, but I, it occurred to me as I was thinking about this, that if we don't do the, and you saw my question this afternoon, if we don't do the centralized kitchen, there are costs associated with that as well, because I think what I've heard is that, that the regional kitchens we're operating would need, I mean, we would probably want to upgrade because, it sounds to me like, I mean, that hasn't been discussed, but it sounds to me like they would at least, and I know you don't have costs, but, but, but it sounds to me like there, that we would have security concerns and other concerns about capacity in those kitchens that we would probably, probably should address if we don't do a centralized kitchen. And so, that's sort of my thoughts on that, is that it's not, it's not a centralized kitchen or nothing. It's a centralized kitchen, or how do we, how do we make it work in our regional kitchens, plus the cost of adding a fourth regional kitchen?
Correct.
So, anyway, that's sort of what I've been thinking about with the kitchen.
Yeah, that's accurate, Jenny.
Shelley?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Can someone remind me how many, what percentage of our kids are eating hot lunches right now? 25% comes to mind, but I'm, I.
We serve about 11,000 meals a day, and that includes lunch, breakfast, and snack, so, that proportion, about eight or nine thousand lunches a day, probably.
How many?
Eight or nine thousand lunches a day, depending on the day.
Okay.
That number continues to grow, not at the rate we would like. Part of that's been just managing some of these issues around production and cost of food and labor going up, so, but we are seeing growth.
Well, I think the issues around kids not eating are related to management issues. I mean, other than getting through the line faster, as far as I can tell, is that what you mean?
Well, some, some of what's invested in here is actually improving, not just, we've talked a lot about that centralized food source, but there's also an investment in the dining facilities as well. So, we actually, which is not a part of this. So, so, yes, I think, and then there's the other issue we've spent many times talking about, and that is just increasing better window of opportunity for students to eat lunch, which is not in here. That's really more of a management labor cost that we have on supervision. So, it's, there are multiple things that contribute to our level of participation, for sure. It's not any one thing.
So, in the $8 million that is currently in there for existing food services facilities, there's dining room improvements?
There are enhancements on those, and some of those happened in, so what we do also is, the project managers, as we did last time, went through and looked at all those. So, if you look at Crestview, look at some of our schools where we actually added space for dining facilities and serving kitchens, not prep kitchens, but serving kitchens. So, that's also, and those are really improvements we would recommend that occur kind of regardless of what we decide to do with a regional or centralized kitchen, because, I mean, it's not the same as an art room, but it's a program. And so, it's really about having adequate programming. But again, that's only part of the issue. The other part of the issue is really creating the length of the day and the time for lunch. So, it's, I mean, they're related, but they are, they both need to be addressed. One's in the bond and one is outside of the bond.
Well, and, thank you.
Yeah.
In trying to understand the central kitchen and the issues around it, I did some research on other districts that have central kitchens. And, you know, there are a fair number that have central kitchens, and it seems like that the number's increasing, you know, for whatever reason, probably many reasons. But, so, I'm not thinking that this is a really terrible idea, because obviously, we aren't the first to think of it.
Right.
But I do have concerns, because it's not something that polled high. It's not something our community really said they wanted.
Right.
And I have a concern that if it's included, that the rest of our bond issuance might be at risk. And so, for me, that's a concern. And I don't know if any of us can answer that right now.
So, it's a conversation we had with Bob Drake, who's our prime consultant on this survey, and it polls right above fifty percent, as, better than some centralized services. But it was his opinion that there's enough support for it. In combination with the high support for other things that are in this package, he believes if we help educate and market correctly to the community, he believes it will carry. I mean, that's his professional opinion, because there's such strong support for other items. And probably part of that would be education as well, but probably not make it a main feature. Obviously, it's a small part of the total, anyway. So, he did not, in his opinion, did not see it as a disabling piece. I mean, whether we want to do it or not is a whole nother discussion, but if we do, he does not see, he did not have the concern from the polling data that you're expressing is a possibility, Shelley. He did not share that concern. Now, if it were a hundred million dollars, and it polled at twenty-five percent or something, that's obviously very different. But there's some education work that we need to do with that so folks understand the value added as a result of it. And I actually think some of the conversations and partnerships, we've worked with the city and county, I think they stand ready to help us with that education piece, because I think that locally grown product and healthy foods is all part of a bigger mission of this county and our city, not just our school district. So, I think we have good partners on that educational piece and what we can add. So, but, you know, we don't know for sure.
Right. And I don't think that anyone would argue that we don't want healthy food for our kids, but I think we're really doing that quite well right now. And I think we, you know, owe a debt of gratitude to our food services staff that we are able to do that. So, I don't feel like by not doing this, that our kids are going to be eating unhealthily.
Yeah, we would agree with that.
Yeah. So, for me, when I think about that twelve million dollars, you know, I just think about, are there programs in our schools that parents would be more supportive of if we put that twenty million dollars there? And because I don't know the detail behind these rows of, you know, dollars here, I certainly can't say, you know, which programs I think would be more valuable than a twelve million dollar kitchen, but I'm guessing that there probably are some that people would think so. So, I just throw that out as another concern, that there is an opportunity cost to funding this kitchen. It's not just that it's only twelve million dollars or whatever, so.
So, I just want to point out, the actual cost for the kitchen is eight. The others was including in the other modifications for the campus. So, I just want, that was teased out last time, so I just want to make sure that, for the record, that that's accurate. I think that, I mean, I just, and I know we've spent a lot of time talking about a very small part of five hundred and seventy-six million dollars, but apparently, we're going to continue, is that this is really about, in my opinion, eliminating regional kitchens and not disrupting those three soon-to-be-four schools with the fourth regional kitchen. It really is about the impact on schools by putting in a centralized force. I mean, that's really, and some reduced costs for staff by, so efficiencies, and having more secure food holdings and access. So, this is really about, not unlike the transportation facility, not unlike ADA access, these are all investments in infrastructure that help us better serve our population overall. Those three principles that host those regional kitchens will vote for this, if they are in our voting district. They would love to get those regional kitchens out of their building, and the fourth school who don't know who they are yet would join them as soon as they find out they're the fourth regional kitchen. It's really impactful. And so, I mean, there isn't much we can do about that unless we do this, because really, I mean, because that's where we prepare the food. And so, that's really the trade-off, Shelley. It's really about, like any program investment we make, this is about reducing, enhancing, we believe, but also, in this case, really reducing the negative educational impact of hosting these regional kitchens in the buildings.
Can you say more about what that is? I mean, I've heard that said over and over, but like, what are, what does that disruption look like?
Vehicles coming and going from the campus, food storage broken into, that's a food security issue for us. We're using sites that were never designed to do this. It would be like you cooking your home kitchen and making it into an industrial restaurant. I mean, it's just, it's not designed to do it. And so, it's very impactful, the storage of equipment. We moved it out of LMS because we had food, I mean, you know, you've been around kitchens, you know how they work. There's racks, metal racks with trays. There's no place to store those. They sit in the multipurpose room, and they're in the way. So, they move them out, and then they're in the hallway. And so, it's just, we have food stacked in the hallways because there isn't places to store it. I mean, we can bring pictures, we can.
No, but I mean.
I mean, that's really the impact, Shelley. It's really, they don't have the capacity by design to do what we're asking them to do. And yet, if we don't make this investment, we will continue to do it. It'll continue to impact that. But they're, you know, Centara stepped up a year ago and took it away from LMS, but we're having the same issues there. I mean, we really, they're just not designed to do this, and it's a concern on multiple fronts. Vehicle traffic in and out of this campus, semis, trucks, happens all day long. And so, we don't have children on this campus. So, safety alone for food delivery trucks and delivery trucks is a big deal on those campuses. I mean, Casey is one of them that's really impacted. It was not designed to be a production kitchen. So, I mean, that's probably as simple as we can make this argument. That's the trade-off. But if it's not the pleasure of the board to do that, then we understand that. And truly, we don't think it's the biggest issue in this package. We think it's an important issue, but it's a small part of the total package. So, anyway, we'll give it the time and attention you want, but there's probably others that deserve some time and attention.
I think it's just the pleasure of the board to understand it.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is what we're trying to do.
We could try to explain it more, again, but.
So, in the eight million dollars that is going to be distributed around the regional kitchens right now, that's in this package, some of that would be to increase food storage, I would assume, if that's a problem right now? Like, places for the racks and like?
No, we are not making improvements on the regional kitchens in this. The improvement on the prep kit, or on the serving kitchens are included in here. That would happen either way if the bond goes forward. There is not space to improve the regional, I mean, they are what they are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there a way, just to understand, that we could look at separately just the processing part of the kitchen versus the storage distribution and prep part? Is that, because maybe we don't want to do the process, can we do the centralized kitchen without the processing piece and put that under more study just to look at, as Tom was suggesting, arrangements with other businesses or people who could assume the cost or bring in that knowledge of how to do that?
We can look into that. I mean, we process food now, just so you know. So, this isn't new. We just don't have a place to store it. But yeah, we can ask Ann to look at that. And so, what you want to do is identify the costs associated with the equipment to process locally-produced products.
Right.
As a part of this total investment.
And really, just looking at what would be the cost difference in operating funds? I'm not worried so much about the bond in this particular case of continuing to source food the way we have versus sourcing it through local sources and processing it and storing it. So, what would be that ongoing cost difference?
We can look at what a pound of tomatoes costs.
Sure.
And we'll see what we can do. I mean, we're just buying it in the open market and taking bids, but it's not local. I mean, because, you know, in November, you can't get tomatoes.
Right.
And so, yeah, we can look at that. I don't know. We'll just have to look.
Okay.
So, we can have, let's see, understand the question? Okay, we'll see what we can do for you.
Okay. And then I have a question that's not kitchen-related. Is that okay?
Go for it.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
So, Don had mentioned that we, in looking at the project costs, we assume that we won't get some of the favorable costs that we got during the last, some of the last bond projects because we are in a different economic climate at that point. How conservatively have we estimated the cost? And the only reason, as I'm just hearing, there's a major labor shortage and that things are actually pretty expensive right now, do we have a good sense of, is this a pretty conservative bond in terms of estimates, or?
We think so, yes. I mean, really, that was the principle we applied, and that was actually discussed a few evenings at CIPSY, because some thought maybe it was too conservative, but it's, you know, it's the unknown. So, I just think, after I've listened to those conversations, and I wouldn't say it was exhaustive, but it was extensive. I think we'd say, yes, conservative, but not overly so. And if we get a pleasant surprise, then that allows us, as it did last time, to do more. But yeah, I think, we think that test hasn't been applied here. So, we're, I'd say we're confident.
Okay. And then, the last piece is just the timing of building rooms for kindergarten and preschool. You know, we've gone through the budget exercise, and there's not a lot of extra money. I don't think there's any.
Right.
So, I'm just concerned about having classrooms empty before we have the funding to pay for the teachers and the staff that we need to support those students. So, have we thought a little bit about how we can time this for a future mill levy, or keeping our fingers crossed for state funding?
Well, I mean, yes, we have thought about it. I think that, obviously, it would be ultimately, if the funding source is a local voted levy for full-day kindergarten, you would authorize that. So, you know, we would do the same kind of polling and try to figure out what the level of support is and the timing of that. So, I mean, this would be a multi-year build-out, obviously, for the whole project. So, you know, could we, I mean, is it possible that we could have some space constructed prior to the passage of a mill levy to do that? If that's the route we have to go in, it doesn't come through legislature, I would say yes. I would say it's also possible that we could pass a mill levy for full-day K, or get, maybe next session they do it, that we wouldn't have places to put the children. So, there will probably be a management plan around this with as many school sites as we have. I mean, they're not going to all pop up at once. And so, Don, the build-out on this total project, you'd estimate to be six years? So, that doesn't mean the last kindergarten classroom would be six years out. I mean, clearly, we would, you know, be thoughtful about the phasing, but, you know, that touches every campus. And so, it will be over time. So, we just need to do a management plan. There's been some discussion about, would everybody participate in full-day K, and would that be a choice? And so, those are all things in a management plan that we would want to consider. But I think clearly, if the board authorizes to incorporate that and the voters approve it, then we're making a commitment, even though we don't, haven't asked for a mill levy yet, or we haven't lobbied the legislators yet to get the money. I mean, clearly, we have a vision that this is going to happen in up to six years, maybe, before it's implemented, sooner if we can. If we received the funding before we got the construction complete, we would certainly explore other options to house children. So, if full-day K, a school wanted it, we'd be as creative as we could be until such time as the construction's done. But, I mean, there's some, you know, a little bit of question mark about all of that timing. But clearly, by authorizing this, if we do, then we're collectively making a commitment with our community to seek the funding to provide those services for those children that choose, families who choose full-day K. Yeah.
Is there a way to build out a school not knowing whether those rooms are going to be used for full-day K or for an additional classroom section, or is there some flexibility in how we build the school so that if we didn't get a mill levy passed to support full-day K, or if it took too long and we had rooms sitting there?
Yeah.
That we could use them?
So, there's.
Because I would feel better about that, if that were the case.
Yeah, so, I know, this is like one of the many questions you ask. I mean, so, you've gotten a lot of emails from me, but the total additional classroom space is twenty-one classrooms. I don't know if you remember that email. But, so, that's, so, there'd be two things that happen, is we'd have a bigger, larger capacity, because when you double the number of children in kindergarten, you need that capacity. That's a big part of what this is. And then, the other is best learning spaces for those children. And so, even if we had the space right now, we don't, but if we did for full-day K, they wouldn't necessarily be optimal for young children. So, part of this is enhancement of learning space for young children as a part of this, like, or an early childhood suite, you know, just like a series of classrooms that accommodate that. And so, yes, that would create better space for young children, and we have young children in our buildings now, so that would be an enhancement. But overall, it would increase the capacity in every building. And so, until such time, so, let's say, the first third of the buildings had their space built on in the first two and a half years, as Don describes, a six-year build-out, and we still don't have the funding for full-day K, those spaces would be available for other use. And the reality is, our early, our kindergarten enrichment program, which touches almost every building except those with full-day K, are, if you've been in those classrooms, they're less than perfect for young children. They're not inappropriate, but they're probably not adequate either. So, we wouldn't eliminate our kindergarten enrichment program until such time. In fact, we could expand our kindergarten enrichment program until such time as we had funding for full-day K, because we have limitations on, we have wait lists on our KE program because of space limitations. And so, so, those two really, that'd be probably part of the management plan that Tina asked about, is that, you know, we've thoughtfully walked that out. So, if we had school A with the space, they want more, another KE classroom, it would make sense we would add it. But those would be spaces absolutely, could be utilized for other programs, collaboration space for mathematics. I mean, and we would design it in a way that would be meed ed specs, obviously, for young children. Because, again, some of these buildings, you know, the space isn't quite as appropriate for young children. It's not inadequate, but it's not probably adequate either. So, I think we have that flexibility, Shelley, to answer your question.
Well, I would support the full-day K piece of this if we were in agreement that we would seek some additional stream of funding that would, either through the state or mill levy. Otherwise, I'm concerned, as Tina is, that we build these buildings and not have the funds to.
The commitment, I think, if we do that.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so, I.
I have a question. I have more questions.
Sure, go ahead, please, Shelley.
About the Erie School?
Yep.
I know that the CIPSY committee discussed whether, that there should be more discussion later on about whether this is a K-five and a separate, so, I would just second that.
Yeah.
I think that that needs to happen. And I know they've also discussed, or you did, that this would be definitely an innovative school, that we would be doing everything we could to make this top-of-the-line.
Yep.
You know, innovative school, which is great. And I would just add that I think we need to look very carefully at the waiting lists that we have for schools in the district and design the programming there in accordance with what it is that parents, obviously, desire, whether that be highly academic, Montessori, Waldorf, you know, wherever we have the long waitlist should be an indication to us what the programming should look like at that school. So, as long as we're doing that, I'm in favor of the Erie School.
Okay.
The Ed Center.
Yes.
I think at our last, the last time we discussed this, that you made an excellent case for a new, newly renovated Ed Center.
Mm-hmm.
I know that it's not something that's popular in polling, but I was there when the ceiling tile fell on you, and, you know.
A memorable evening.
Yes. And so, I know that this building needs some work, and I agree that it's the public face of the school district. And I think that we can probably convince people that this needs to be done.
Yeah.
And I, you know, it sounds like you really thought out how you would redesign it so that it was more accessible to the public. And so, I think, I think that I can confidently say that this needs to be done. It's, no offense, but fairly dismal place, and you could definitely use some sprucing up. The transportation facility, I think the tour was wonderful in terms of convincing me that that needs to be done, so I'm supportive of that. I'm just hitting the big ones here.
Yeah.
The special Ed Center, you know, I was really appalled when I visited Halcyon at how, you know, dingy that school is, and.
It's pretty inadequate.
Yeah, I very much think that that needs to be fixed. I'm not quite sure about the autistic program, what that would look like. I'm assuming, though, we'd have that figured out before we.
Built a building.
Built a building. Because, I mean, I was reading your comments in the paper about how you're not sure that we can exceed the Joshua School or any of the other facility schools that we use for that. So, I'm not sure about the timing of that, but.
So, here's where we are, Shelley, with that. We had good conversation with CIPSY on this very point. And so, and then it came, it was in, then it was out, and Halcyon was in, and it was out through the course of a year. But, you know, part of this is a timing issue about the opportunity to ask the voters for the resources to have a facility that we've approximated six million dollars investment. But our commitment would be that if this stays in and goes forward, I mean, we're going to do visioning with our community around these services irregardless. But we just said, we don't know enough until we do more of that planning with our community about what the nature of the services are, how best delivered, whether it's for children who receive services around autism or Halcyon. What we know is that we would need some flexibility to be able to accommodate all of those needs. And some of them do need centralized services. I don't know if you heard the piece on National Public Radio about two, three weeks ago. It's really quite an active debate around autism in the parent and professional community about centralized source, or, you know, schools of common children's needs versus the inclusionary practices. Our practices tend to be inclusionary for all children. But there's quite a debate going on in the public right now around the Joshua Schools or a school like ours that would be like that, that's really a school with children with similar or unique needs. So, we just know that we would need to engage our community in that. We certainly wouldn't commit to a design or a location until such time as that happened. We're just, fear is, if we don't engage in this now, by the time we come back again, we will have lost a decade. And we just think that's too big of a risk. But that would be our commitment, that we need to do that. And Halcyon's school community and those services would be a part of that.
The only concern I had reading.
The only concern I had reading that article was that it looked like at the Joshua School, they had four to one staffing.
Yeah.
You know, four teachers to one.
Sixty thousand dollars a year?
So I, I just not sure how we would fund the.
Well, we pay for all those services. No one goes to Joshua School, we pay that check. And so the question is, do we pay a private provider sixty thousand dollars per student? Or rather, do we employ our own staff? I mean, it's just that, it's a, it's a business model. So that's, yeah, it's, it's, if we couldn't do that quality, I mean, this isn't what this is about tonight. But if we couldn't do that, then that's, that was really my comment in the paper, is that if we can't do it as efficiently or as effectively, then it's not our business to be in. But I would just say we have not taken the discussion down that path yet, but we need to.
Okay, I had another quick question here. I would have the same, um, comment about the preschool expansion that I do about full day K, that, you know, many states are looking for separate streams of funding to fund this preschool. And I think that we need to do that. We're talking about investing a lot of money in relatively few students. I mean, there's like 550 students, preschool students out there. And we're talking, you know, about a 10 million dollar expansion and probably some other miscellaneous expenses. And our cost per preschool student is much higher than it is for the average student. And I, I've read the research on both sides. And, you know, there's a lot of research that suggests that there are emotional and, and, regulatory issues that come up with kids that have been in preschool later on, emotional issues. And I think if you're just looking at test scores, you might see a temporary improvement up till second grade. There's no study that says you see anything beyond that. And I am very hesitant to have the district invest millions of dollars in an unproven intervention, despite the fact that everyone thinks it's effective. You know, they're not reading the research about, about that. So I have serious reservations about investing a lot of money in preschool until we know it's effective and until we have a separate stream of funding for it.
Lori, one of the things, just on process, maybe, I mean, we had a couple of questions that came up tonight that we can do some, we will do some research, we won't, can, we will. And, um, we have a work session scheduled for next, I don't know, week from tonight, is that 17th? So, uh, I mean, if it's the pleasure of the board, I mean, I know this is a lot to go through and there have been some questions that we responded to as late as this afternoon, just to provide information. I mean, if it's the pleasure of the board, I don't want to say we're exhausted tonight, but we would be glad to continue to gather that. And if there are other questions that arise through the course of the week, we have a work session scheduled. I mean, this is not an action item ultimately. I mean, what we, what I've said, and I'll just say it again, is that, um, you know, we just, at some point in June, and we have the 17th and we have the 24th, that, you know, we just need to be confident that the board says, all right, this is where we want to go with this. And then we'll go to work on it and we'll bring back the facility master plan to the board in August that would have this by school and, and site detail that you've asked for. That will come back to you in August. And at that point, they would actually ask you to approve the facility master plan based on your direction that you'll give us in June. And then that's also when we'll bring to you language around the ballot that would be congruent with these. I mean, it'll be general language by design, but it would be that. So those are the action items, is the approval of facility master plan in August and the ballot language. But we certainly can use the next two Tuesdays to continue, uh, if needed, to make sure that you have enough information to decide which package or combination of packages you want us to go to work on. So that, that's what's helpful to us. So we make the best use of staff time July to get you a package ready to look at again in August. So just, I want to remind people of our timeline and process.
I, I was just, um, I've taken a few notes here from, from the day. And what, what I was hearing was this. I think I've heard two questions and maybe there are more, but, um, two questions about two issues. Tom and Shelley, I think, have both asked for some information about the kitchen and the possibility of working with other businesses.
Food processing piece.
Pardon?
Tina, I think, has.
Tina, right, sorry, okay. So I think.
So we'll do some work on that.
So I think that's a question to think about whether there's a different way to do the kitchen operation. I think that's a question. And the second question, or another question I heard was, Tom, I think you suggested moving around, um, P two, I think. And I think it would be helpful to have specific ideas of what you're thinking about in that, I mean, you can juggle the numbers any various ways. And I, I mean, I think what we should focus on is what the program is or what the facility is or what you would want to cut or to move up or to move down. I mean, I'm not, for me, I'm not quite sure where you're, what you're headed toward. Trying to get, are you trying to lower P two?
Yeah, I don't have an agenda in the items necessarily.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, what I have is just the overall, I think, um, you know, good business practice of having distinctions. So that if for some reason we come up in the future here and say, Matt 576 is too much, then we have a distinct choice of reducing that. But that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, so is, is it, is it make sense now to just get a sense of where we are? I mean, I don't want to do a lot of work. I mean, I have to say that the very first time I heard this report, I was, um, I mean, 800 million dollars worth of need. The presentation was 576 and less and less. And my thought was, oh, my gosh, that's a lot of money, until I really delved into it. And so after I heard the polling data and, and the ideas from the community, and after I've spoken with a number of people in the community, I'm more con- comfortable with this number. So I'm not in the mode at this point to say, well, what can we cut? Or what should we move? So I'm just curious to have, whether it makes sense to, before we start cutting or moving, to say whether we're sort of on target with the third one. Does that, does that make sense?
Could I suggest something?
Sure.
That we hold off on making a decision or doing work on this to the work session? Because I'd like to get into a deep discussion about the polling data, the era of the polling data, what the community surveys were as well as the community meetings, because they don't align up. You know, if I look at those, the priorities don't align up. So, so I'd like to, you know, I don't want it to do, create extra work. So, so, so my concern is that, is that I, I don't want things to get shot down. There, there will be opponents, you know, from the polling data, 40% of people don't want to increase taxes. So we know that, there will be opponents. And, and I just hate for this whole thing to get shot down because of specific issues that are small, maybe in dollar amount, but that people can leverage that are against it. That's my concern.
Okay, so for, um, all right. So is there anything else that we need to ask staff to bring back to us?
I'll send my AC renewable power related questions in writing to Bruce and copy the board.
Thank you so much, Sam.
Otherwise, that was going to be a creative writing activity for me tomorrow, so thank you. I think I can do the food processing one, but I think I need some help on the AC one, thank you.
But actually, and this is a little bit off the topic, but, I mean, because we're talking about the bond. But, you know, I mean, we can up our program on sustainability and do other partnerships. I mean, I'm not, in my mind, I'm not sure that it makes sense to balance off AC with something else. I mean, fewer miles or lower temperatures or, I don't know, more solar, more Nissan leaves? I don't know, somewhere in there, um, to try to think about sustainability. I mean, I think it's a really important thing we've done and I'm really glad we've got the sustainability director and we've looked at it, but I'm just not sure about tying AC in these buildings where kids are learning and teachers are working to, to that. I mean, I think it should be a goal in it of itself, of its own value. But, um, you know, we can have different ideas about how to do that too. So, okay, Bruce, do you feel that you have direction?
Yeah, we're good. I think, again, I would just, so we, we've got the two. And, um, and it sounds like, Tom, we will take some time as a part of the work session. We'll do a little bit between then about looking at the polling data. I would just ask, again, if you get home and start thinking about things, if there's information that you think could be helpful, just drop me a note as you've done and I'll copy you back. And we're, we're compiling this information and putting it in the board docs library so the public can see those questions. I mean, we're kind of cleaning them up so they're easy to read, but, um, we're trying to make this as transparent as we can. But I think we have enough to proceed.
Okay. Okay, uh, Shelley?
I just have a, a quick comment that, you know, from the community meetings, what, what I took from those mainly was that parents in the community are really wanting the program category. You know, the program compatible, compatibility category. And, you know, when I look at it, I see a lot of money that's still left out there that we're not meeting those needs. And so, you know, I'm not suggesting that we up the bond issue by that amount of money, but I'm wondering if there isn't someplace where we could take some of that from and put it into program. And I don't know, you know, as a board, if we could ever agree on that, but, and maybe we couldn't, but I just think there's a lot still hanging out there that we're not doing for our parents and our students that they would like us to do.
So we've had this conversation at the cabinet level. And Don is closest to this because he works closest with the program managers. And if you choose to go for the priority three, the biggest package, and then we bring you the facility master plan in August, we think when folks see that application to their sites, they're going to be very pleased. We actually think that, because the program money is, we've realized that, plus the innovation funding. It's that priority three package. We, um, we think these will be notable enhancements of learning space for all children if we are, if we choose to keep the priority three package together. So even though there's, because we have 900 million dollars worth of needs and it's only a 500 million dollar package, that clearly there are things yet that won't be done. But this is really, will be a noticeable enhancement of learning space as a result of this, if we're able to keep the full priority three package together. So, I mean, there's always trade offs that we could make, but obviously we're still trying to get the basic things done, the FCA's, because we don't want to trade a boiler off for, you know, for something else because that's some of what happened in the last bond issue and none of that went away, as you know. In fact, it costs more now. So it is a building blocks thing and that's part of what makes the app. And, and to Jim's point earlier about the polling data, if you've had a chance to look through those factors that were on that 576 million, those were, because there was description around those, that, um, it would seem that what people saw was the added value that you get by making that level investment. I mean, you don't know until you run the election. But that's our hope, is that it's more than just the basic health and safety issues. It really, that too, and, uh, creating, um, program space that enhances learning. So that's, I mean, that's how this was designed to ask the question.
We can only guess about that though.
You're right.
Because I, I really did not understand that polling result.
Okay.
It just didn't make sense, yeah.
Great.
Okay. Anything else on this topic? All right, so the next item on our agenda is agenda setting for upcoming meetings. I think Sandy sent out a note asking about the retreat date. And so we'd all like to get back to her for some, uh, a time commitment for some time in, I think it's August. Sorry, I'm not sure. I haven't responded. Yeah, August. Is there, are there other topics or other, um, requests? So then for our next meeting, it's a work session.
Yeah, five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Here.
So we'll do a light lunch or a light meal and we'll have it here in a work session format at five.
And the primary topic will be?
It'll be the primary topic.
Okay.
CIPSY or facility improvement.
Facilities master plan. And if we have questions between now and then, or we need tours of kitchens or?
Just let us know.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Okay, well, then, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thanks.